You certainly can suggest to them what benefits they will achieve in getting out your information and message to the voters, but you shouldn't have anything in the question either to cause confusion in the question or to cause the question in some way to be found to be defective. But I would caution you, you should be careful in the provision of incentives to the voters, because obviously if you collect money from these taxes, there may be savings in other areas and you can use those funds to do other projects, but there can't be a technical quid pro quo. In other words, you vote for this and this automatically happens. That's because they're independent decisions that you as a council need to make. But again, you can certainly indicate that if there is a referendum passes, there will be additional monies freed up for other purposes, or there will be certain, you know, fees or whatever that you may have that could be reduced if that were to occur. But you can't provide that as an incentive because you would have to take a separate action in order to accomplish that, a fee reduction or so forth.
Alderman Suback.
But we can make a pledge to the residents through our own marketing materials that if this passes, we pledge that as city councils, we will do this. If we elect to break that pledge in the future, you'll be responsible to the voters, that they might not reelect you in the next election, but it is okay for us to make a pledge, correct? And not in the question.
You certainly can't do it in the question, but you can do it in your materials to the voters and any discussions that you have to the voters, you can make those representations. Again, it's a pledge. There would be some formal action of the council that would be necessary in order to implement that pledge, and that's why you can't marry the two together, because they're two separate actions.
And a follow-up, Mr. Mayor, couple.
Alderman Suback.
Is there a requirement by statute that the question needs to be a run-on sentence, or can we have multiple sentences in the referendum question? Can we use periods and capitalized things, or does that have to be one sentence?
Mr. Bond.
The statute of silence has to run on questions, but you have to have a question. And the question by statute is required to have certain component parts to it, and I've used all of my journalistic and English skills to try and incorporate all of those ideas with the various punctuation throughout to make it into a singular question, because that's the question that is being placed to the voters. You can add additional information, but that is separate and apart and outside of the question itself, so.
I hope for your sake, don't announce where you went to high school for the high school English teacher, if still alive, is probably rolling in his or her grave as we speak. I want to ask you, we have here the 1% total sales tax pursuant to both municipal retailers' occupational tax and municipal service occupational tax. Can we just say pursuant to statute and eliminate the name, because that causes a lot of confusion.
Mr. Bond.
Unfortunately, no, because the Department of Revenue needs to know what they're collecting pursuant to a particular tax, and as you know and all the taxpayers know, there is a host of taxes that are mandated by state statute and in order to know exactly which tax it's being collected pursuant to. Some of the taxes that are on the books, the city of Wooddale, as a non-home rule community, simply doesn't have the authority to impose. So the Department of Revenue was going to be doing the collection of that essentially, has got to know which tax is being collected pursuant to, whether it's within the statutory provisions of that particular tax. So unfortunately, the simplified method suggested would probably make it more understandable to the voters, but less understandable to the Department of Revenue and therefore is not an acceptable abbreviation of the question.
My next follow-up, Mr. Mayor, if I could. I'm assuming that we have to ask for both of them then, since that's the way this question was proposed?
That's correct. Under the code that they have to be done, the municipal retailer's occupation tax has to be done in conjunction with the non-home rule municipal service occupation tax.
Can we, after it says municipal service occupational tax, can we put a period there or a question mark there and then say, "The tax will not apply to food and prescription drugs," or something, you know, that that could be a separate sentence, because right now it's just too much of a...
Mr. Bond.
Yes, you could. If you wanted to put the question, you have to have the question, and the question has to include the nature of the tax and the amount of the tax sought. So if it was the desire of the council to have the question read, shall the city of Wooddale, a non-home rule community, impose a 1% total sales tax pursuant to both the municipal retailer's occupation tax and the municipal service occupation tax?
Not period yet. Then say, "For property tax relief which will save city services for the residents of the city of Wooddale?" Question mark. And then the next sentence is, "Dear resident, you know, it will not apply to food and prescription drugs." Or something, you know, just that which, you know, have that be a separate sentence that finishes it. "The tax will not apply to food and prescription drugs." Period.
Yeah, the only danger you would run is that it wouldn't be included in the question, but it may be a little more awkward to do it that way, but if it's the direction of the council, we could modify it in some fashion to put the question mark at the, remove that phrase, which does not apply to food and prescription drugs, which is true pursuant to the statute, and just put that in after the question. It's somewhat unusual, but the Election Commission would allow that to go, to be placed on the ballot in that fashion.
I think my English teacher's alive, so I don't want to offend her. If that's the unusual way to do it, and you guys did it differently in Wheaton, that's fine, but I just want, I think right now the way it reads is very, it's still confusing to me.
Alderman Tullamy.
Just one point, tonight, we have received two different copies, again, two different versions. One was a draft and the other, I guess, is the one that we're actually looking at and talking about right now. What I would recommend is, if you take the one, the draft, it's basically, it's the same...
Where's the draft?
The draft was included with this as well, there was an extra one in there, or at least I received mine.
I didn't find mine at all.
The point I want to make is that, only difference I see with this, with the draft and this 06-001, is that it does not include in municipal service occupation tax. If we took, right after, municipal retailer's occupation tax and municipal service occupation tax, okay, comma, "For property tax relief which will save city services for the residents of the city of Wooddale?" Question mark. The proposed tax will not apply to sale, it basically does everything you were asking for. Do you know what I'm saying? If you took this line, municipal service tax, here, and the municipal service tax, and just added it right here, and just added it right after this, wouldn't it say the same thing?
By hook or crook, we have to pass this tonight, correct?
Correct.
That's correct. The other alternative could be to put the question mark, if you're looking at the copy that's not marked draft, is put the question mark after municipal service occupation tax, question mark, and put, "Said tax does not apply to food and prescription drugs and will provide property tax relief which will save city services for the residents of Wooddale."
Alderman Shockey.
Yeah, I think part of the problem with the first one was the combination of the retailer's occupational tax and municipal service occupation tax. Can't we say there, "After occupation tax as required by law," period, "But this will not apply to food and prescription drugs," and it is for property tax relief as it shows there?
Yeah.
Just that simple change.
I'd be reluctant to put that in that question in that fashion, because it would suggest that the passage of those two taxes is required by law and would give...
Didn't you say it was?
The combination is required, but I think in the wording, the way that was presented, it would suggest that the voters have to vote yes, because they are required by law to vote yes. In other words, the requirement is that both the municipal retailer's occupation tax and the municipal service occupation tax have to be, you have to assess those in conjunction with one another.
Well, using your legalese, how can you combine the two and say that we have to do both together in the simplest way, so that people aren't confused?
I think he tried to do that.
That was my attempt, because if the full name of the tax is actually non-home rule municipal retailer's occupation tax and non-home rule municipal service occupation tax, and we put the phrase, "Shall the city of Wooddale, a non-home rule community," to try and avoid that, so that particular issue. You know, we've gone back and forth with trying to simplify this as best we can and yet still comply with the mandates of the statute, and short of, you know, putting a question mark, like I said, after the tax, and just putting a phraseology after that as to the limitations, you know, we're getting pretty bare-boned as it is. And I think the suggestion that it's required, even though the two are required by law, to be put on a ballot in conjunction with one another, to put that in the ordinance, I think, would be somewhat confusing and maybe mislead the voters that this, these are, this tax in itself is mandated by law, and that's not the case. It's only mandated if the voters vote to approve it.
Well, there's got to be a way of saying that that's going to be simple. It must be. And then just have the last part and two other sentences about, "Does not apply to food and prescriptions and is for property tax relief." To me, that's the only thing that's wrong with this, the way it's written here. To save the confusion, pursuant to both the municipal retailer's occupational tax and the, can you say, joint municipal service occupational tax, or something to tie the two together to make it one, so they know it's just one tax. I mean, I don't know.
Well, you could use the language, the "in conjunction with," but the fear is that some voters may not understand that, exactly what that means in that context.
I think what this is pointing out more than anything else is there is no magical language. The burden's going to be on us as city council members to go and sell it to the residents and to inform them of the importance of the decision. Alderman Suback.
I think maybe, I know at one point you said, "Which will save city services for the residents." I think we just make it simpler and say, "For property tax relief," and strike, you know, that, "Which will save city services for the residents of the city of Wooddale." That's just the reality and let that be part of the marketing stuff. Just say, "For property tax relief," and maybe even strike the language, "Which will not apply to food and prescription drugs." Just say, "When we pass this tax for property tax relief," period, and the rest of it, let it be done by marketing. That we, when we market it, we make sure they know it's not to food and drug, and that when we market it, we let them know that city services are in the line with or without the passage of this tax.
Mr. Bond.
Well, the language as modified would satisfy the legal requirements.
Just to leave it as, "For property tax relief," period.
I'm only commenting that it will satisfy the legal requirements, whether somebody wants to include the food and drug, prescription drug. I know that was something that is part of some, the discussion, that there was some suggestion it ought to be in there. It does simplify the question, it shortens the question, and one of the things you need to consider in adopting the question is, A, do we comply with the legal requirements, and B, you know, what's the impact to the voters? If you recall, we've got a ballot that's going to have, you know, this condensed in some fashion, and actually it'll be longer down the page. So you've got to, you want to keep the question as concise as possible while still complying with the statute, so that would accomplish that objective.
Alderman Tullamy.
Okay. I would agree, I mean, as far as with what Alderman Suback is saying, as far as taking out, "Which will save city services," however, I think, again, if you look at the original draft, where, you know, we had the original question, and then under the question you had, "The proposed tax will not apply to sales of food or prescription drugs." Is it or is it not allowable? I mean, that, to me, that's the only question I have, because if it's allowable, then you have the question and then you have that underneath the question, the separate line. Then it's straightforward.
Alderman Tullamy, Mr. Bond.
It is not prohibited by either the Election Code or the municipal code to have it that way. What the Election Commission will look at is what you put in that box and what is certified to them. That's what they will place on the ballot. So that, in that form, would appear on the ballot in that particular format.
Alderman Winger.
Thank you. I'm in complete agreement to keep this question as simple as possible. I think it's absolutely critical that we do that, and if we end this question, "For property tax relief," I said this before, I think that that would, you know, sell me as a voter. I read what I'm voting on, and at the end, "For property tax relief," then I know I'm going to benefit from it right away. I think it's really important to end up this question on a positive aspect. So I'd agree with Alderman Suback. We keep it as simple as possible, and at the end, "For property tax relief," and then we don't try and explain it any further. I think we might further confuse the situation that way. Thank you.
In a minute, I'm going to have revised language, which I'll read, and we'll take final comments, then we'll vote on it. One minute.
Yeah.
All right, listening to all your comments. What we have is, "Shall the city of Wooddale, a non-home rule community, impose a 1% total sales tax pursuant to both the municipal retailer's occupation tax and the municipal services occupation tax for property tax relief. This tax does not apply to food and prescription drugs." Alderman Wesley.
I think we still should take both out there somehow. There's got to be another word that answers both.
Can't legally...
There's got to be another word.
Well, legally, you have to...
I understand that, but there's got to be another word out there in that dictionary.
Mr. Bond.
Well, "in conjunction with," but again, then you have some voters who don't understand that, you know, the both, they have to be, they have, they're in tandem, they have to be treated in tandem, and "both" was the shortest and most concise identifier modifier for that purpose.
Alderman Suback.
My only concern about adding, again, that it's, because it's true, it's, "It's not going to apply to food and prescription drugs," is the first question is, "Shall we impose it?" And then when you add that negative, "It does not apply to this," again, you might have some voter confusion that they're going to vote yes and say, "It doesn't apply to this, so do I vote no now." You know, I think that that can, and we have to mass-market this, but "That doesn't apply to food and prescription drugs" really should be in the marketing material, and if, you know, they get three mailers and they don't, and the resident by the time the voter doesn't see it by that point, I don't think they're ever going to get it. So if it says, "For property tax relief," you leave it at that.
Yeah, I would agree. Cut it short. Make it short.
All right.
What's are we wording now on this?
Just striking the sentence. All right, the revised version. Shall the city of Wooddale, a non-home rule community, impose a 1% total sales tax pursuant to both the municipal retailer's occupation tax and the municipal service occupation tax? For property tax relief.
Boom, that's it.
Yeah. Any further on the question? Alderman Wesley?
So wait, so now, let me get this straight. We eliminated food and prescription out of that.
We struck, "Which does not apply to food and prescription drugs," and then we further struck, "Which shall save city services for the residents of the city of Wooddale."
I went Shirley on the record to say she's okay, so she doesn't yell at me tomorrow that you got the language wrong away. So if Shirley's okay with it, I'm okay. We are going to end in a question mark, right, Mayor?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Hearing no further comment, roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
No.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Tullamy?
Yes.
City Clerk?
That passes ordinance 0-06-54.
Item two?
Yes, item two. Second item on the, on the list is a resol, I make a motion to adopt a resolution designating I task a bank and trust company as a depository for the city of Wooddale with the modifications. Our interim finance director, Maggie Powers, had taken a, had tweaked out the ordinance which was initially in front of us to, to ensure, but to state that I task a bank is the primary, but in the event that we need to put money at another bank to not have it completely exclusive. So that's what the revisions are in front of you.
First and second on the question?
Who's the second, Wesley?
I think it was Alderman Shockey.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Tullamy?
Yes.
That passes resolution 0-06-16. Congratulations, I task a bank and trust. Is item three for information only, or...
Item three, a report on vehicle sticker program, and Ms. Powers, did you wish to give a verbal update?
As of today's date, we are about two-thirds, one and two-thirds percent higher in vehicle sticker collections than we were last year at this time, and since the fees were doubled, that means that a lot of people have not purchased stickers. Ordinarily, people purchase their stickers beginning May 15th, sell a lot of stickers in June, and we sell stragglers in July, and then the rest of the months are people who move into the city, people who transfer their vehicles, and they pay a dollar for that. So we will be doing second mailings towards the end of August to see if we can capture more of those people who still have not purchased stickers. The additional revenue that I anticipate the city will receive from those increased fees is probably going to be about $75,000. Originally, we thought maybe $100,000, but at this point, unless enforcement picks up dramatically, or compliance picks up dramatically, I don't think you're going to see another $100,000.
Alderman Wesley.
So, could you tell me how many, could you give me a ballpark figure, how many were purchased already, or no, you don't have that?
I don't have that, I don't have that printout in front of me. I'm just going by the, what I know the fees were and how many vehicles, vehicle forms that we sent out, and then how much revenue has been collected thus far.
So would you say we got more than half to see?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think so.
Oh, we still got a lot more out there.
Yes, and unfortunately, we also have a lot of bad information in our file, which we're trying to clean out. Some people purchased stickers this year by mail, didn't give us their name or their telephone number. They gave us an address, and they gave us a vehicle license plate number and a check. So we don't know how to reach them, and they might be in a multiple-unit building.
Okay.
So we have no way of tracking them down. That's part of the problem, and the other problem is, people don't always tell us when they've gotten rid of a car or when they've traded it in. So we have outstanding records on that vehicle, when in fact, the resident no longer owns it.
Okay. Can I do a follow-up on that?
Alderman Wesley.
Now, my question will probably be to the police department now. How are we going to enforce this? And I knew this was going to happen, because I made the issue when we up the vehicle stickers that the majority of these people aren't going to buy them, because we doubled them. Now, how are we going to enforce now? And maybe it's a legal question, too. Mr. Bond, could we walk on the driveway and see if they got vehicle stickers or not?
Who is that question to first? The chief of police or Mr. Bond?
Chief.
Wesley, with regards to the enforcement aspect, we usually custom, we customarily give our residents 90 days from the date of effect before we start enforcement of this particular violation. So that would take them to the end of September 15th. Today being the 17th, in about 28 days, we'll really be going out and enforcing this in a very aggressive manner. Like anything else, we try to give an extension, an extension of grace period to our citizens, but after 90 days, that's when the enforcement mode kicks in.
Mr. Bond.
Well, you have to be cautious, obviously, if you're going on public property, but to the extent that the police can, in the course of discharging their duties, can make a determination as to whether or not there is a violation of the city code and have a reasonable belief that a violation exists based on those observations or information that's provided to them, then they can. But short of that, they, you know, I don't suggest a house-to-house search of those vehicles.
I totally understand that, but then, here's a typical example that was an argument up here on the council, that how are we going to enforce this, knowing that we aren't going to bring in the money that you said we were going to bring in? And that, I'm not blaming you, I'm not blaming, but here we up a vehicle sticker, and we are not getting the revenue that we've also. And that was the debate I had, is how are we going to enforce it? Are we going to put a CSO on this job eight hours a day to go after these people? I don't think it's fair. I got numerous phone calls saying that they aren't going to purchase vehicle stickers because we doubled them. Now, that's the question I have.
Alderman Tullamy.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. First off, we've had vehicle stickers in town for, I mean, I've been here since '89, and I've been paying for vehicle stickers since '89. I'm not sure how far back before that it goes. You always have a problem with enforcement on anything that the city does. We have a problem with enforcement on issuing licenses to businesses. You have problems with permits, people doing stuff on weekends, okay, so they don't have to get permits. You're always going to have issues. However, I understand what the chief just said as far as waiting 90 days. These people that said, you know, they're not going to buy them because we doubled it, well, you know what? If they're in violation of the ordinance and they're in violation of the law, if they get caught, they're the ones that are going to have to deal with it. You know, I mean, 90 days is, in my opinion, is way too much to begin with, okay? But I understand. You're always going to have a problem with enforcement, and I think the fact that, you know, to come up and say, "Well, you know, we said we're not going to get this kind of money," we knew, we knew that. Anybody that's on this, we all knew that. But the point was, is that it was put out there to try and raise the funds. Now, you know, like I had suggested last week, we look at possibly rolling it back. Here's an example, rolling it back to the way it was if, you know, this referendum gets passed. You know, I'm not opposed to that. In fact, I strongly would support that, but to, as far as going out and getting people to comply, that is not our jurisdiction to determine. That is up to the chief of police, that's up to the city manager, and it's in their hands. I mean, and I would expect that Maggie come back in October or November and tell us, where are we at? You know, what was the rate of compliance? If I understood you right, you said that a lot of the records we had were bad. So we don't even know, we don't even know. Maggie can say, "We're this far into it, and we've only got, you know, two-thirds collected," but we don't even know if those numbers are truly right to begin with, because we don't know the real number of vehicles. It all goes back to, we need to have a comprehensive database, okay, with all this information, and that's what we're trying to work towards as a city, and we will get there. It's just going to take some time.
Maggie, did you have anything further?
Just that when we sent out the second notices, the purpose of that is to, again, refine the file, because if things come back to us nondeliverable, then we know to remove those. Each iteration gets us a little further.
Thank you, Maggie. Alderman Wesley.
My concern here is still, Dave, and I understand that, but how could you say the records are wrong already, knowing that we sent out the same amount of vehicle stickers we send all the time? Some were wrong. I agree, as she said, but we got the same amount we sent out, so don't tell me the records are wrong.
Wait.
All right, let me suggest to both of you, let me suggest to both of you, you're doing committee business at a city council meeting.
I just have one comment.
So let me wrap it up with a final comment, Alderman Tullamy, and then Alderman Wesley.
Just one single comment, okay? To tell you how it is, Eugene, my ma lives in Addison. My ma hasn't had a car in six years. This year, she got a letter from the village of Addison, saying that she needed to purchase a sticker for her vehicle that she hasn't owned in over six years. So, records are wrong. Who knows how many, you know, how many are wrong or how many are right? Until you get that final number, we don't know, and that's my only point. I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying, we don't really know the real number.
Alderman Wesley.
All right, then I want to make a motion that we put this back on agenda for a committee meeting.
There's nothing really to move to put on, and actually, you're acting chair for Public Health, Safety and Judiciary, which if we're talking enforcement, I think that's where it belongs, so if you choose to add that to the next agenda, that's your choice. Very good, that'll be done.